Some information for you under the table. Shelley also provided information on the table. Mary and I had some conversations before this. We made some copies of, first of all, four goals. Knowing that everything that right now we're talking about, active performances, group vibes, the goals that you have set. So we want to make sure everybody has a copy of that in front of them. Then we have a couple of different items. One, I believe, was sent by Tom, and that's just a single sheet paper with a conversation about did they make one year's growth? And that is the one page with some green rectangles on it. The Iowa assessment scores and information proficiency is on the legal page that we see as well. And then the Iowa assessment and proficiency trends that Shelley had started sometime back with that scorecard. That information, and she's got the tablet on the sheet and has a lot of graphs. Shelley, did you want to have some conversations to start with yours?
Well, we had conversations also with regards to as far as the facilitation of all
this information tonight. Mary and I were having that conversation as to, we can be here for your, or answering some of the questions that you have as far as giving you all the information. We can do that and/or kind of up to you as we go through. There's something that you would like for us to talk about to begin with? So if Shelley, you want to talk about your particular spreadsheet and graphic? We can go that route.
Sure. So Charma and I went to a speed workshop that was in Fairfield on board involved with Student Achiever. So when we were looking at all sorts of data, I was like, you know what? At that workshop, this was the kind, this first sheet was the kind of thing that they used in our discussion. Look at the board level, what are the trends that we're seeing? So first page you see there, and you have it for different, this is reading the timeline. You've got the last five years worth of proficiency in the whole session, right? And the colors, so it goes across, but the colors will show you like a graph. So if you want to also look at it by this year, the student class, the likelihood, you can kind of see over the last few years, the same group of kids in high school, what their scores are, and that same Iowa group of kids, kind of the ones below in that second grade. And then all I did was try to graph. We had talked about one of our goals being trying to close whether what being above or at or above the state average. And this year, whether we're bad, just trying to close those gaps by half. So the graph is associated with it, and the night stage just really grabs those two things for you with OSK being blue and the state average over time being, so you can kind of see the trend that the state, state average has been on and what OSK's average has been. And so now I guess if we think reading, which is the first one, you know, what need to see? You know, in our work session, overall, you know, you kind of look at what percent of our, of our students are proficient in reading. They can kind of look there and kind of see, right, this is variable. And then what's happened to the percent of students who are proficient over the past few years? What's made of that trend? We can have some discussion about that, or you guys want to just look at it? Is their achievement stronger at some levels than some secondary ones than others? So do you want to add those graphs, what do you guys see?
I'd say we spread all the way to the 11th grade and 11th grade, it seems like we just need, we're not quite the state average, but we are certainly consistent at the cross. And I just think they looked at math and math doesn't enable the same thing. And I think so should say, science, science, science is the same thing. I think that's quite remarkable with high school, high school cases that backed up the state average.
First page, is it just that you're, or is it that this is, that this is? One of the things that stood out to me in our time zone for reading, because you get to level five, six grade reading proficiency, the book over five years, we're kind of on the, I don't have a list from there, but we're kind of on the first year, and the last two years, how much of that gap does, you know, probably? And I know that we narrated our student reports, what was, trying to provide more time for reading.
You're right. And at the sixth grade with conforming to the diet system and putting a lot more time into both math and reading, we're hoping that had a positive influence. Sometimes you just have pretty much kids who improve. But do you think that what the teachers are doing at that sixth grade level, the new class, may not?
No, I don't. There's some discussion, maybe it's so much that I have to read and math that others might call, but their science, their science won't help as well, and social studies. So it's maybe it's intentional, maybe learn to read.
My interest is if you look at the whole, the painted, look at them, if the, like I say, sixth grade, the readings, sixth grade the math, sixth grade the science, more or less, not exactly, didn't the, they're all up and down at about the same rate for all three subjects? And if you look around, it's not exact, but it's like, everything went down, everything went up. It's not completely, but has a trend, and you look at the word.
Very interesting, of course, to put this one. Well, the other thing to think about, my guess is this adding is all the students all together. What I'm trying to say is sometimes if a student moves in and they haven't been in there very long, you pull them out of your test, get you out of your school, because you're not getting true reflection from year to year.
These are face teams?
No, these, this would be all students. It's all students. So we had 175 at the time in ninth grade, also quite, once I get tested.
I think one of your whispers, possibly, is a point, as much as him?
Right.
This one, thanks to, other charging, the insight. But some of those were looking at, that you know, in those subgroups, maybe it wasn't all that much. If everybody went down, the subject went down, and they're not, or, those are my, yes, or.
Shelley, I'm sorry, Shelley, if we go to the reading, the reading chart, it said reading graph, if I go over to 15, 16 grades set, I go put it right off, and then the blue line is where they were at, a year ago in fifth grade, is that right? If I go to the left, the blue is the same class.
Yeah, whatever color, so it's not the exact same group of kids, but pretty much.
But that's, meaning if you go all the way through, they're, they're showing you a different, different situation with the graph. I mean, because the popper could sort of point out reading apples and apples going towards the rest of the classes.
This is Shelley.
This is apples, the oranges, and the sixth grade on the, on the graph.
On the graph.
And her blue is Shelley's.
Right.
Blue is apples' apples.
Correct. I'm just surprised a little bit that the wonders did have more impact personally.
And I could have the elementary person talk to that specifically. But even though you have an orange program, and what's important is consistency and fidelity, which is going to be done each and every day, and how much support you can provide those teachers in the classroom. You know, if you find pockets of teacher here, a teacher there who's not staying on pace or not keeping up with what's in the other, or their instructional methods aren't high, that's effective. You've got to have those conversations, and you've got to be able to give people the place of a lot of patience, of a billion, a million. And I think for the most part, you know, our staff does not stay in a job or an excellent job. But you know, one of the things we did notice is that's pockets here and there of staff, and how do we help them make sure that they're staying on top, on pace, and identifying those kids that are struggling. When we find those kids are struggling, okay, now we've got to give them to the process up to one, to two, and get that help too. So identifying those kids early, quickly, extremely important. So it's just not about the teaching part. It's what are they learning? You've got to be able to identify what they are learning, what they're not learning, and that extra support. So that's all part of that process the teachers have to deal with.
So that being said, they've had, teachers have two meetings so, two days so far, right? Is that right? So have they looked at the data on the students that are non-proficient? Are they ready for next year to, okay, up and running right away?
We've spent, and they're getting even parts of tomorrow before, for the lunch. Well, part of this last two and a half days is get this out in front of them. And I think a lot of teachers have already expected in the last, the last week after the blood suit, they're still here, they're taking a look at a lot of that data, and those conversations, even if our instructional coaching will continue on and administratively, we're going to be meeting tomorrow, we're having a number of views on making sure our processes for next year, and the systems, the things that need to make sure are in place. Work was stronger today on some special ed things, we've got an administrative problem, they're going to be in tomorrow morning, handbook, making sure, and all these different systemic things are in place, so.
Right.
Well, fourth grade, fourth grade had pretty big progress. The third grade basically had gone backwards.
A little bit. Yeah, it's hard to judge the data, but we'll have to do this. And grades slide, and I know from reading, you know, that's what happened to me. And, you know, I don't know what he is, or wants to discuss, or if you'd like, after a little bit, the instructions, and older, what time, to have them come back and talk to us. Here, we've got some more time, see what in the data, and then we'll read it, or here's the, here's the key things that we see, and then we can also actually, you know, how we can, like, process. Also kind of overlaying, putting the other assessment, so you're not just reading what they want, not how. And that is always a concern, but even the math data that was shared, there's progress. But those are not progress, and what occurs, you learn from the gap, like, the growth that was expected wasn't going to make growth.
And I think that's how it provides the other spreadsheet, that just simply, they look at the number of, across all the different classes, as far as did these students make at least one year growth, and you look at, so they are, I remember, did. Tom, you know what, that situation, you can explain that information, but there you live in the sixth grade, and you go, hmm, did, many year old form, but we know their scores definitely improved on the previous year, that grade, and a little bit higher. You know, then the other measurement that's, that's important is we can't look at age work, you know, constant, weekly, variety assessments that teachers are dealing with with the students, that's important information as well.
I think that's what we're reading, so we all, the final means when, as to what percentage of our students are.
I don't know that. Mary, do you know that?
Well, so just look at the top sheet, and you start from left to right.
Is that on the legal page?
Yep, it's the legal one. This is the top sheet, and then it just gets full as the grades go on. So kindergarten is just pretty easy one to look at. So first, obviously Iowa assessment, it's not actionable, so that's, that may. And then you look at Ainsweb, and it's letting Ainsweb be in kindergarten, which is basically a name, so you can see it's all 76% of them, that's the target. And then you go all the way to spring, 82.6. So what's the threshold we want? We want at least eight to be healthy, 80% or four should be the target, and so kindergarten definitely is. So if you wanted to just look at Ainsweb, you just look at that piece of it, and you can keep looking at all the grades up through eighth grade, so you can see that. We add math when you get to third grade, but you see in reading, and first grade.
I have a question. About the, should that, should that, you know, 80% times two, is that that same number?
Yep. By twenty color code, three means that we met before, the red is anything below, pretty much at 70%, what we do here, but 49% of the students. Now you have to remember that in first grade, it's not a letter naming, they actually have to do in the spring, a CVM, a reading growth. And that's why it goes down, because these are really non-readers when it's in the first grade. So it's a measure that through Eli, through literacy initiative, which is why we're moving the class, because CVM is counterintuitive. So we'll have a better measure when we can take that.
Is that accurate?
Yep. Well, Ainsweb from last year, but there's some, oh, that's, so we switched, because it wasn't the same in fall as the spring. And so first grade, really, we're not comparing the same substance. You can't really look at that as what they grew, and what they didn't, so they're kind of a measure.
Same math?
No, math, same thing, same measures.
If you remember last, we had the conversations about whether to continue with Ainsweb and or continue to go fast, we are going slightly fast, the elementary.
First grade, and it's because of first grade.
And it's free, but it's a way, it's a better comparison, but Ainsweb still, probably better.
So in second grade, CVM now becomes, yes, we've got readers, and now you can start to compare all the winter, spring. You can see the progression. Now we see the target changes from fall to winter, but if you're a quarter, healthy, and you are, and it's question changing, that's all about, and you're going to have higher expectations, which is what we saw first. For the second grade, we did see an increase from fall to winter, and winter to spring as well. Now where we wanted it to be, because you want 80%, and that's only 63%. And don't even talk about serious special needs of that second grade. You're going to see all throughout second grade data, and then now, it's kind of a downward, and sad, it's to be that grade, as kindergarten, as first grade, we saw a lot of data, and what, I'd be that class to watch. And then we have third grade, and you see consistent improvement on third grade's CVM, all the way up to 73%. Which is really good growth, really good growth. Yeah, on the tech level, yeah. Now math, you can see 86%, so they did super well. You look at that growth from fall, and when you look at this data, and you look at the fall, think that a little bit of the grand assault from first year that they actually implemented, they administered this. And so there was probably some direction fidelity types of things going on, maybe actually reading directions, which we were supposed to, to be administered, to be make sure we did a timing correctly, and then made adjustments.
September.
Yeah. It was brand new to the elementary, and so we could expect that. And so then we looked again in the winter, and we saw a huge jump. So you're going to see a massive jump from fall to winter. Don't think that's because of some miracle thing happened, it's just, well, we got used to that particular assessment, and now we understand how to administer it. And so it's probably got a little bit of a fly while we fall, and then again in spring.
Lots of winter.
Well, which was January, and spring is end of April into May. Right, we end of year. So that fall business is based on, next year, I think that will be a more accurate report on this, because we need to come out and administer. You can keep looking, you've got fourth grade as well, who has got needs, yeah, they grew, and that's nearly like third grade did. You saw from the Iowa assessments, that was probably a double fly, that fourth grade grew. And they've got some, some needs and issues that Mr. Raisler probably talked more people about as well. But it's a panel, though, you see the tech level, 80% of the students were reading at grade level, and that's actually a little lucky, and probably the low ages are probably the minimum that we ever want to see. And it's good grade, you see. They also saw, every grade on that CVM, we saw good growth. And if you look at that from last year, we didn't see that same amount of growth. So Craig talking about, yeah, Iowa assessment may not have reflected for it, but probably Ainsweb reflected some of that growth that we wanted to see. I think this is a better measure.
I would agree. You have three data points versus one.
And then, of course, you have progress by grade in between, and we don't have that progress by grade by student, but they had complete intervention. Iowa assessment's a one-time deal in the spring. Anyhow, we want to look at that, it's one data point. Ainsweb and math are probably our two better data points to take a look at. But it's a panel, we're not going to do that to everybody next year, just because of how many assessments. It's important to triangulate that, but it's also important that the whole assess, so we want to use those in our work. And teachers still have that at their access, so that if they have a student, if they're still wondering about where their reading level is, they can still administer that assessment. So as you kind of go through those again, you get out to the middle school, and that means it's a slightly different picture in terms of Ainsweb. But again, the implement, or the interventions are done quite differently here as well. You don't have instructional strategies, it's not more of a one-on-one. They are, during the MPS time, Mr. Mott can talk a little bit about the closed on, there's some interventions that are given. Not by reading teachers, which is a different thing. The elementary, we have reading specials that are doing that, where in the elementary, they may or may not have their reading order. We do that always through grades, we.
So when we talk about the, well, the second or the third grade, they're being low, if you look, ninth grade looks like it's our item.
Yeah, they did really, really well, weren't they?
They look like they're, they're, they're a group that consists of that one thing. That's going to be a strong group, you're going to have a weak group.
And if you follow down apples to apples, look at ninth grade, they have been performing consistently. All throughout. Right, we don't have Ainsweb data for them, unless they, they're low as well in math, of course, yeah, and that's just not, there aren't any screeners at the moment. And Francis now goes just through fifth grade, so we don't have that at the middle score. But you do have math from grade through tenth, third grade through tenth grade. So if you look at third grade, one of the columns right after Ainsweb is what percent actually were above the mean of the average? That's what that data is giving. So third grade in the fall, we did, were at Ainsweb, so I'm on the 48, so they, fewer students actually made mean. Then you come over here, and you can see, you can see what the actual, 198.6, 196.4, to their point, so we want to have that data. So I don't want to jump ahead and try to compute the mean score, probably too late on the last one.
We have P L S U D East Con, this is what they're using today, and they have their charters out, and they say, one, two, three, four, five, to Ainsweb, seven.
Classroom assessments.
Classroom assessments.
How closely do those now over into reading tier one? If a student is getting a three or a four on those benchmark things, how close does that now over to tier one?
Now, we had that conversation in our SIP team, and you guys should pipe in here. Probably three years ago, we were starting to see students that were getting threes and even twos, that we would look at their Iowa assessment, we'd look at their math data, we'd look at Ainsweb and say, what's the story here? Why aren't they doing so well in classroom assessments? We started taking a look at the rubrics and the expectations that teachers had in terms of what does it take to get a three, and they realized, you know what? We're probably not rigorous enough. And so rewrote the descriptions, and it starts to now even out, and we take a look at who those students are, their day to day ones. Now let's compare them to those that are getting, are in intervention, or being really sort of in tier two even in the classroom, and those are starting to correlate much more.
I was, to me, that's a lot of work for teachers to do, to go through those ratings and, do they now over to the core of math?
Much better than now, Charma, than they.
There should be a very small core.
Yeah, there should be. Because if there isn't, then we discuss, so which one is a more accurate picture?
Initially, there would have been work, necessarily.
And the fact that, which is how you're listening to classes, that sometimes you're right, reverse, big enough to drive a similar flow, and other times it takes that so hard that it's hard to, but everybody has to be on the same page, just what, what is good and evil.
And it wasn't that they weren't all using the same rubric. It was because the rubric wasn't rigorous enough. The expectation was to go on the rubric, and they recognized that. It was getting a three, but in Ainsweb, they were in a tier three intervention, that doesn't add up.
Are there any, one question I would ask, I mean, the biggest thing for those of you who've got more time in the data, have taken away, did you guys have a, again, I don't like, maybe speak now, if you ever have, but I think we'll be here. Here's, here's a couple, a couple of things that are, for my work.
I don't want to speak for that one, we have this presentation.
So one takeaway, or, you know, we still are looking at these data, is it's interesting to see how some data suggests, for example, sixth grade reading proficiency is trending upwards, and that's really positive. And then you look at, did they make a year's growth in sixth grade? And we may be slightly below that in some ways. Seventh grade took a dip in the proficiency data, and it's Seventh grade took a dip in the proficiency data, and in seventh and eighth grade, in some areas, we've made more than a year's growth, we've made some really positive results, which is very happy to see. So when, when also trying to narrow the focus into what is working, but isn't, we have a lot of things going on, and to be able to try to concentrate, focus on what it does in effect, we're looking at that as kind of a very close relationship. We have a gut feeling about what worked for us. We know that, we feel that at sixth grade, teachers having forty students as they're compared to one hundred and forty students, and building those relationships has really helped. The universal resources or the consistent resources that they're using, I think that's the feedback that we're getting from our teachers is that's a big profit. Those are just some observations and your questions.
One, one other thing, though, with sixth grade, I'm going to add in, is that prior to that, they weren't doing smaller instruction. They have ninety minutes of instruction now, and it's much more focused, because smaller both in reading and math. And I see that, I really think that helps contribute to that. When you are focused on what the students need and then really paying attention to that, in that smaller part, you're going to see some gains. Ninety minutes of instruction versus what we have, we doubled the amount of instruction. That's going to make a big difference.
One thing about that second grade class, we did the whole, we're really examining that data deeper, accuracy grew a lot. So the words per minute are still a little low, but we know by next year, if we get the accuracy under control and up, then the role words per minute, that's one thing that we talk a lot, because we're working so much more in more of the phonics than we ever have, so we're hopeful that next year, the role words per minute wise. One thing that the data does show you is in kindergarten, over fifty of our students in kindergarten are reading level F and above, so they're reading way into first grade. And so we have, where you were talking about wonders, our kindergartners, we have several in those much higher levels of readers than we've ever had before. So our kindergarten teachers are very proud of the work that they have done. In our first grade, we're celebrating, because that second grade class was very hard on the first grade teachers, because first grade class, almost eighty percent are on grade level with the reading, like, on that side.
I agree with, you know, putting that accuracy down first, and then working on accuracy, otherwise you just have reading faster, poor.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, just looking at third, fourth, and fifth grade, we're all having this conversation, is, I was absolutely now tying to comprehension. And so, you know, that is a big part that they're saying, okay, we have little readers, but get a comprehension. And so just looking at correlations that are happening there, and realizing that as, as we're going and instructing, that there's another part that plays into that, and that's the writing part. And so, again, they play into that. And that's one of the things I think we've really focused a lot more on this year, is the writing. And we'll continue to focus on, because what we're finding is that they haven't been, we haven't been very good writers, we haven't been producing very good writers. And so that's where we'll, we'll continue to spend more time, is on that writing, but additionally, looking at comprehension, the fluency as well, that goes.
And that fluency is a predictor.
Right, absolutely.
And then you have to start thinking, you're entering more specific skills. With that writing piece, in the past, has there been more emphasis on, on the editing part of writing?
No, no.
The new, revising is then a huge piece, and then moving into the editing. Students were not used to revising, it was, let's do our first and final copy. And now it is first copy, sometimes we never get the final copy. Sometimes we edit, sometimes we revise, and then revise again. So that's a new process, that writing process has been a huge.
And studying kindergarten, they're doing their kindergarten, they're repelling their pieces, and they're all parts of it, and that's all kind of the, the, the.
Yes.
That's what I'm hoping, is it, does it funnel into strengths then?
I just kind of want to summarize, and I'll probably leave some, this is a ten-year journey, but the amount of effort that's put forth for our readers looks something like this. We have our small group instruction going on in class. We have our title teachers working with those students. We have our reading board, people working with those students. We have our special ed students, you know, receiving those interventions and working there. Our kindergarten have volunteers that come in and work with them on their sight learners. All these things are happening regularly with our identified struggling readers. You know, and we continue to monitor and track them vigorously.
To answer your question, if our development are kind of works for next year, so where do you go on by Thursday? Let's, let's, oh, we did an identity, we're ready to go.
So if you have five groups, you're not necessarily spending equal time with all five groups, right? Because your top groups, you can kind of let go, your bottom groups, you need more intensity. Okay?
I feel we hit pretty well. I think there's room for improvement. My juniors, like, there's a couple areas there that we're scratching our head and we're looking at. But overall, I feel, starting to hit the eighties. So.
One question I have is the D and F, like, you know, when we talked about the Ds and Fs have gone down. Is there a certain subject that there's more Ds and Fs in, that we need to really look at for another, that other class, maybe that A period, or, you know, that, that study period? Like, maybe, if you don't know that, just, I'd like to know. I mean, are there more Ds and Fs coming out of science, coming out of math, that comes out of reading, that they come, you know what I'm saying? You don't have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I do well, I've got my ideas, but, really? I would like my folks to sit down, so that we can go through that before I would say.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, you don't have to tell me now, but I would hope that you look at the data, and then be able to say, okay, yeah.
We got it.
Okay.
We're looking at it. We've turned into it a little bit already. I do a study right now, and we, and, and then they take it, and they use it all summer, they can look at it all summer, and we come back in the fall, and that's when we set our next goals. And that's where we, we dig even a little bit deeper, so that we know which kids we need to work with when we start.
Yes, but here's the problem, if you look at the fall, and you have to have a schedule, what I'm looking at is, if you know that you're, you're having a lot of kids struggling math, then there should be that last period of the day where they have another chance for math. A lot of schools are doing that. Or if they're struggling in science and biology or something, and you know you've got a group of kids, then you have a, a set class, so they, they repeat it.
We did that, we did not find that we were getting good results with it, but we had kids doing back-to-back, where they got two math classes. Not even if they were back-to-back, but they got two in the same day, and we weren't getting as good of results as what we've been getting now.
You have, you have, they have, you shouldn't hesitate to class to go over it, this is with the, with the scheduling, right? You were on a seven-period schedule before. I'm saying, if you're in the algebra two, so you take the core class, or what is it going to be, forty-five minutes? But if you know the kids have struggled in algebra one, and they're taking algebra two, then they should take algebra two, part two. You see what I'm saying? Am I, have I lost you guys?
You're saying, taking algebra two class plus an additional next number of minutes?
Algebra four, there you go.
Algebra two support.
Right.
Which, in effect, with the MTSS program, and looking at that, that's really what that could be and should be.
But part of the problem is, it's not a class, it's just individuals calling the teacher. Isn't that right?
No, teachers, teachers will request kids that they feel did not get that lesson, or do need help, and they will small, use small groups.
It's a small group.
They also do independent, if a teacher, and then we also have teachers, let's say it's chemistry or whatever, and they have a lab, they can go there and, and work with that lab. So teachers can require or request X amount of kids per day, depending on what they want to work on.
Right.
So it, it can be what you're, what you're talking about.
Yeah, and maybe the flexibility is now probably better, because if you go with that, then you're not going to be.
Right. No, but the flexibility created in that, that final MTSS grade will give a lot of, a lot of opportunities for teachers to do exactly that, and not just have fifteen points, they have one, four, five, if needing, and they can select the ankle kids who maybe didn't get it. The other advantage that would be a teacher, is that it needs to happen to the kids, did not get it, maybe, because I thought of this in a way, you know, they, they have a different learning style, the teacher can come and try, maybe teach that from a different angle, and say, all right, let's try that, so now you understand it. So there are some opportunities, there are first-class opportunities to learn.
I think a dis-solder group, saying like that, it's likely to be much more effective than if the kids who are not getting it in the class, and there's thirty kids, and they really don't want to raise their hand, and then show, hey, I don't get this, not only for embarrassment reasons, but for the, oh, come on, from the rest of the kids, let's keep this moving. I think they're much more likely to be honest, and therefore be successful in their way, if they're doing it in the MTSS.
We want to do a little more also, where we're finding, the kids can request to go see some teacher. Teacher may not know, but that kid needs to go, and so they're able to go too.
Right. Because you would know that they're not doing, or they won't tell us if they take the test, and then it's too late.
What? Formative assessments? I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we're doing formative assessments about every, every day, every two days. I don't want to waste time.
Did, did, did your group do anything, how would compare to our, our goals of last year? That we set for this year?
I have done some, I tried to look at where the, where the, I don't know, I was like, we did not have all of the math in the, which I believe, now, it's Mary, we have all of that, so we could take a, a look at that. It was a mixed bag of Iowa assessments, that you could probably sell from the ground.
I was trying to look at it, but I was, you had it down, it was a fifty.
And I did need some more, I, I could put a, just a numerical chart, but I did not have all of these, so I think that's probably one else we have that we, we could go there and do this. I thought.
That's a good idea.
I can disagree with that.
And, 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 you know, administrators, if they have more time to go through it, what they're, what they see as the government areas of focus, and what they feel they need from the board, not tonight, but in the future, I think will help us, is really, for, for events.
So one question for Mary, real quick, if we are, if we close the gap, we wanted to close half the gap, right? Do you think it's reasonable to get to the state average within next year?
We're talking about Iowa assessments, the state average, because that's the only one that has the state average.
Right.
In many cases, we're already above the AEA's average.
Right.
Is it possible, if you look at third grade, that would be a huge jump, to jump by seventy? Seventy percent is a pretty big jump.
Especially in the secondary.
Yeah.
But that's put on your, it's in that test.
Fourth grade's got nine percent to go. Yeah, we get into some of the upper grades, and a couple actually are above state, depending on which one you're looking at, math, reading, or science.
Six to nine, they're both above.
So with some grades, great, yes, definitely, and other grades, I think it's going to take a couple of years to probably get to state, and again, depends on how everybody else in state does.
Right.
But looking at the state, it's not that it's that important.
Well, most of them are very slow, over the last five, right?
So maybe a better goal for next year would be seventy-five percent of the K twelve, quick K eleven, or one eleven, or three twelve, would be at the, be average, state.
Seventy-five percent.
Percent of the.
All students.
Yeah, all students. If you're trying to close the gap, we're going to, we're going to have a few classes that are probably too hard, too big, too far to reach.
Yeah, to me, it's, the goal, I would think to have any class, you know, that we don't have goals for them, you know, that, that's a, that's a goal, and granted, not always meaningful, it's just need something out there to work for.
Well, this is a discussion we can add later, I mean.
And I, I could live from all of these whole, to a larger shape, or that shape.
Even more productive than, well, this is last year.
Asking teachers and administrators, what they, they, so often, I can, like, just pile more stuff on the place that's to do, is there anything that you can take off?
Well, when we did our exercises in administrative team, and we looked at what our big rocks are, our big focus areas, they're pretty narrow. We're not focusing on too much stuff. As a district, we have four big things, and some of them are work processes, and they are initiatives, if you will. DLCs is not something that's on their plate.
It's something.
It's called construction, it's something on the other side. Yeah. So I think that's been shared with you, if you take a look at that, and have a discussion around those big focus areas, one thing we truly think of when we have that discussion is, if we add something, or something becomes as a priority, then what do we take off? And we have that conversation. When we think some of them are so welded together that you can't say, well, we're going to drop that, because it's part of this whole picture.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. So when we put those focus areas together, I don't think we feel as administrative team that we're overtaxing. Now, some might disagree with our assessment.
So should we be thinking about adding those small, just cities, something, maybe some time here, or, or, Charmin, I, 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 I.
Let's be, June fourteenth.
But it's by ways way, recently.
Way months ago.
One question I have, and Dr. Brooks, he mentioned our comparison to AEA average, is there anything in here that, that shows hospitalism, or is that in different forms?
If you look at these, it's on the small right side, starting at third grade.
Okay.
You got AEA states and a hospital.
Okay, and that's Iowa assessments?
Yes, so those are Iowa assessments. It's the only state comparison we have.
Right, okay.
And inside that.
Yes, that's where I got that. Once it became available, I grabbed all that. And then you can look on Iowa assessments, where you can't look on third grade, you have to look starting at fourth grade, is what percent of our students made a year's growth?
Right.
And that's kind of in the middle, under the heading adequate yearly progress. So the average growth was one hundred and seventeen point three percent for this third grade class. Fifty-five percent of those students did make at least a year's growth. Now, to give you an idea, what you're looking for there, is you're looking for fifty percent of your students to make a year's growth for a healthy system. of your students to make a year's growth for a healthy system. Anything above sixty percent is like awesome. And so if you see fourth grade's at fifty-five, this is, this is a percent that we're looking at for system health. You look at fifth grade, it's at fifty-seven percent. And it just continues to grow. We have a couple that, yep, there's that sixth grade, only forty percent. So we're gonna continue to look. So proficiency is one measure, and then you've got growth. Growth is probably a better measure for us to see whether or not the system has really solid power.
Right, if you're making.
You brought Mike, Steve, I keep wanting to say Mike Six, but Mike seems probably fitting. Was Mike at charity or?
Mike, we met him last night.
I think he had charity. Right. The whole view of the data. We brought Mike in last Thursday, two Thursdays ago, sat down, looked at our data. And as I was gonna mention earlier, there are pockets of solid growth, there's some very good things going on, and he came back and said, you know, I've identified four or five, six different classes and areas that things are going extremely well year after year after year. And then we also look at, oh, we got some pockets where we're not even hoping for one. So it is truly this bad. We simply have to recognize that, say, okay, what we'll do to help those areas that they aren't getting the need and support and getting as much growth as we'd like to. So that's part of the educational process in our. Chat, please, sit down, thank you. Your sense of things, a lot of elements, probably, right now. Doesn't look good, huh? We've got three weeks. We have three weeks until the fourth, so. Sit down and chat.
And I'll mention, I do have a role of June fourteen being our only meeting for the month. It can happen, squeeze, squeeze in some administrative contract things and everything like that. All that same.
Twenty-three, right?
Three weeks. And maybe July, the same, same thing.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys just working on the numbers. Yeah, I agree. Impressive work.
Does the next four meetings on June fourteen, Charlie?
Yes, it is.
Remember, maybe in St. Charles.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Does it start on Monday night, thirteen? Or do we leave on fourteen?
Well, we leave that Monday night. We get down there.
What happens, I leave on Tuesday night, ten p.m. after the board meeting?
For you, Lee?
I'll leave this day.
Then you'll get down there on Wednesday, I know.
I'll get that, I'll be there.
And everybody else will be there, actually.
We'll be there. They want your, the data, they're like. Well, that's what I was gonna bring up too, is do we need the administrative here?
Let me take a look, Chad. I'm doing down that road selection, I'm pretty sure it's still my heart. If I leave here, Tim, here's another thing for my parents, my father, mother, I'll live about two hours south of here. So if I got down there at midnight, got my hours of sleep, got to five, still had St. Louis and Port, and I don't want to miss the one day. Sorry, somebody that wears a jersey, right? So I'll be there, boys are present. No, especially back, anything, you know, brothers. I don't like, I don't like Monday meetings. If you guys left on Monday, I can leave Monday night, if we are meeting on Monday, I can leave late Monday night still, either in the morning or at night. Yes, sir, we'll leave.
Please, June seventh, option?
My birthday.
It could be.
Hey, I've said it before, because I'm a little.
You don't consider coming and eating with us to be a present?
No, it really is, and it's good, I like that. I'll talk to Chad, we'll sit down, and we'll take a look at six, seven potential dates. And I have no problem with stuff, or even the people. So, and then we'll see what works, if they're all under schedule. Most important is try to be consistent, at least get this information out to the press and, so that if you're someone who can and almost know well ahead of time that justice has been changed.
Well, honestly, in all seriousness, the idea of you pushing yourself, driving everybody up, is different on their sleep requirements, but there's a lot of data that says that you get a certain level of tired, that you're more dangerous to yourself and others than if you were grown. So I would hate to be, I hate to be, oh, we have to have the meeting now, and now you're gonna be driving that tired, I would hate to be there, and be partially responsible for you driving exhausted.
Well, thank you, but I will, we'll check the dates. Done that, or nothing like that. We'll check our dates, we'll get back with everybody, so the rest knows what. Okay.